City Council Work Session to order Tuesday, March the 12th. A member of the City Council may be attending the meeting via telephone or video conference. All work session items listed are for discussion only, no action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the City Council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of a specific subject. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. We're going to have roll call by Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Watkins. He has not joined us via Zoom yet. Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Councilmember Ward, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our agenda item today is the Historic EV Foundation update and discussion on the Electric Vehicle Museum-Kingman Project. The Historic Electric Vehicle Foundation will provide council with an update on their Electric Vehicle Museum-Kingman Project. So we want to introduce today Mr. Kent Backy, Tasha O'Neil, Becky Fawcett, and Mike May with the Historic EV Foundation. And with that, I'm going to turn it. Oh, perfect. All right. Tasha, would you like to introduce your video guests?
We have Thomas Tru and Hannah Laham. She's joining us via Zoom. They are also part of our organization.
Okay, perfect. All right. We want to go ahead with your presentation.
I've been asked to give a little background on myself. I'll be very brief. I've been in the espresso coffee machine business for the last 40 years, having established a network of sales and distribution in the U.S. We acquired the Italian manufacturer in 1994 for expansion with Starbucks retail expansion. So I was CEO of the company until 2018. I've been involved in the global expansion of the business. I've been involved in other startups and various things. And in 1994, got my first electric vehicle and have been a very avid, and I wouldn't say a collector, but very avidly involved in conversions and in the technology and the future of electric vehicles for the planet. The foundation was established in 2014 by Rodrick Wild, who has amassed our collection of electric vehicles and chose Kingman and Route 66 as the place he wanted the museum to be. And so that's our mission, and we're here to fulfill that dream and to take the electric vehicles into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Backy. So this is all new for me. I've never sat in one of these type of work sessions, so forgive me if I do it wrong. We sent over the presentation kind of in a nutshell, and then an afterthought I had was the appropriations request that had a lot of additional information, more of an actual, like, just detailed plan, because that's what the state required in order to submit the request for funds. So I sent that, and I also printed it out so that you would have that to reference, because I think that there will be questions that that will answer. But without, you know, having a location completely secured, it's hard to have a whole plan laid out, because there's going to be details I just can't commit to without other commitments. So I don't want to take the time unless you all haven't had a chance to review the presentation that was sent to go over that verbatim. I do want to share that. And again, I don't know the due process per se of a workshop like this, but do you have any questions, or should I just go into that presentation and go through it? You all have that binded copy of it.
I personally would prefer you to go through the presentation.
Okay, sure.
And then we can hold our questions or ask them as the presentation goes along, whatever your pleasure is.
Okey-dokey. Hannah Laham, she is on the line. I think a few of you have had a chance to meet her. She was in our last, you know, casual visit. She is located in Buffalo, so it wasn't easy for her to get here for today's session. But she may speak. And Hannah, please feel comfortable if you want to speak up, because your opinion is very, your point of view is very important.
Well, thank you. Next time, I definitely will be there. I wish I could have been there this time.
Oh, shoot, it's not very. Okay, so we all see the screen here. I will just scroll through it. This is, I think, a year or so ago, we had an opportunity to share this rendering. It was a different scaled version of the rendering that was probably unforeseeable in the near future because of its eccentricities, you know, but it was quite lovely. So we minimized it, you know, we took out the vending machine for the vehicles and kind of taking it. Yes, ma'am.
Let me trade you mics, because that one's really crackly.
Oh, thank you. So it looks like there's a lot going on in this rendering, however, it's just kind of the idea of what things could be, you know? Being that the museum, we want to carry on and we want to maintain, we just want to share the history of electric transportation, and it goes back 100-plus years. And the technology moving forward will go on, you know, just as long or longer. So we have here the electric airplane, I think her name is Alice. You know, there is the Tesla, the big rig truck, and there's a train in here somewhere, because, you know, along with diesel engines, we have electrified motors in those that help power them as well. So I will just, I just wanted to kind of explain the photo. There are, again, lots going on. Also, you see public spaces, and then in the background, you see there the original Oddfellow Building that the foundation has, they're acquired. Thank you for that word, I appreciate you. And that will be a part of it, you know, maybe a library or, you know, office building or however it works out. Scrolling to the next page, I guess I could just read it. "We're building the Route 66 Electric Vehicle Museum, the world's first electric vehicle museum. Our state-of-the-art facility will combine interactive and augmented technologies with the world's largest collection of historically significant electric vehicles to immerse visitors from around the globe in a one-of-a-kind experiential atmosphere right here in Kingman, Arizona." So it, in my head, when I describe this to somebody or I talk about this, it's, I describe it more of like a science center. You know, it's more than just a museum with exhibits, and as grateful as we are to have the current collection at the powerhouse, it will be much, much more than we see there, offering educational facilities and opportunities and hands-on. Did that go more than one slide? No, okay. I can't tell, Annie, if I'm going too many at a time. Okay. I think I did go too many. Gosh darn it. Oh, it's not touchscreen. Sorry.
I know, but I think I skipped.
Okay, there we go. That's not working. Okay, so key features. We will offer interactive exhibits, educational engines, electric vehicle displays, and a community hub. I think I want to point out that as a big, as a big point to community, because I am a big fan of our community, and there are a few things that we could probably utilize here in the area. And Becky and I have had an opportunity over the past couple of years to go to some larger chamber statewide events, and both the last two times that we went, they were in museums in downtown Phoenix, in the Phoenix Art Museum or the, which was the last one? The historic, the Natural History Museum. And it's just a good location, I think, to hold those more upper-scale, larger events, and this facility, we hope to offer the community, you know, additional resources for those types of things. We hope to partner with, you know, STEM programs and other educational facilities around the area that are also, you know, we have the robotics, the Kama, is it, forgive me, I've had a long day. The just, you know, all of, we don't have those partnerships in place, again, because we have to have something to offer them and a location to offer them. But the hope would be to offer, you know, nationwide, bringing educators from around the country here to our community to educate them on the technology and the advancing trades to then take back to their communities to teach that. So of course, it's a process, but that would be part of the facility's offerings. Do we already see this page? I don't, I don't think it's me, guys. Annie, rotate. Gosh darn it. Well, because the down arrow doesn't like to, doesn't want to down arrow, so I'll click on that. Oh, can I reengage it?
Can you share it with me?
Yeah. Yes, please. That would be wonderful. Didn't claim it was my strong suit. So obviously, we are Kingman in Mojave County in Arizona, and the benefits to having this facility in our area, I think, will benefit, you know, according to our statistics and our research, would economically impact not only our county, our community as Kingman, but the state as a whole. So it's why we've even addressed the state level for funding and additional support. Next, please. So this here is some statistics on how museums are of benefit in the really expansion of how beneficial these are. So for every dollar spent, museums return more than $5 in tax revenue. The annual tax impact increases will account for significant gains in municipal revenue for Mojave County and Kingman. The museum fuels direct and indirect spending in the form of increased sales tax, sales tax, direct, indirect, and included commerce. The vast majority of all direct spending will benefit Kingman. The proximity to a museum influences an area's desirability, triggering a multiplier-like effect on surrounding property tax values. Transforming a vacant property into a community asset naturally improves property value and regional perception. So especially, I think, with what the city is doing with the cityscape and the downtown and everything that we're developing and working towards now, I think this addition on the other end of Beale Street, you know, opposite the powerhouse, it just brings to the area more of that attraction and more opportunity to get people to stop here, to stay here, to spend here. When I, just to sidebar a little, after reviewing the Kingman Tourism Strategic Plan, I just feel that this, this project and the potential that this project holds, it really lines up with Kingman's tourism and strategic plan and can offer a lot to our area, to our citizens, to our travelers, to, and more. Next, please. So there is a ripple effect. We have workforce development. EVM, which is the Electric Vehicle Museum, is expected to have a value-added multiplier of 2.0 on jobs and employment. The museum's spending will have a ripple effect, supporting jobs both indirectly and directly. Every job created by the museum sector results in $16,495 in additional tax revenue. EVM has a value-added multiple of 3.2 on regional industry and commerce, attracting businesses to the area and incentivizing countywide economic and social growth. By offering diverse, meaningful positions, career elevation, and skills training, EVM provides an innovative approach to population decline and the mass exodus of youth. The museum will add a number of new jobs of varying degrees of skill requirements. To support our goal of regional growth and prosperity, we'll be offering job skills training, access to educational programs, and career advancement opportunities. Our three-part expansion plan and capital campaign ensures that job growth in the region will multiply annually over the next decade. And then you see the projected annual growth over year one and year two there to the right.
I did have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Your revenue numbers, where did you source those from?
They should be in the bibliography. Hannah, do you have that off the top of your head, where we sourced the numbers?
Can you guys hear me?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, wasn't sure. So are we talking about the forecasted projected revenue?
The 3.2 to 3.5 million in the, in year one.
So on the next, I believe it's the next slide after this one, it gives a, like a forecasted estimate and has a breakdown of the different numbers. So what I did to come up with that number, as with any business evaluation when it's in the form of a forecast, it's an educated guess, right? Based on whatever you can put together that makes the most sense. Now, what I did was look at across the nation, cities that are roughly the size of Kingman that have museums and what they were bringing in, and I had to just take an educated estimate based on those. Now, I also used the Department of Labor's statistic calculator and then kind of push those numbers again, just to be extra, extra sure. So whatever they say at the bottom, these are our conservative estimates, I put it through the calculator twice, three times over, just to make sure, because, you know, at the end of the day, it's a forecast. We could make quadruple this. We could make 10 times less than this. You will never truly know.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that's helpful.
The Electric Vehicle Museum will be more than a financial and tourist generator. Those are simply bonus perks. It will be a local institution and community pillar dedicated to Kingman and the people who call Kingman home. Aside from the clear economic advantages, EVM will be a socioeconomic enhancer, contributing to the welfare and quality of life of the local community and region through innovative partnerships, sustainability initiatives, workforce development, education, training, and even well-being, overall adding to our quality of life. Next slide, please. The museum will help preserve our rich culture, cultural identity and association with the historic Route 66. EVM's proximity to and connection to the icon positions, it is a facilitator of its local cultural diversity, sharing the history, and growing tourism. Businesses across Kingman and Mojave County will benefit from the indirect and induced spending of the Route 66 Electric Vehicle Museum, its employees, and its visitors. Tourism in particular propels an induced impact. Visiting the museum from out of town encourages spending on local goods, services, and other local attractions, therefore increasing the average expenditure of each visitor. Museums spend more than $2 billion per year on educational activities, with three-quarters of their budgets being spent on K through 12. Museums support local and state curricula, tailoring their programs to enhance the education of their regions. The Electric Vehicle Museum will be an educational center promoting the expansion of minds at every age. Electric vehicles and the historic Route 66 attract mass tourism from across the U.S. and abroad. As a top-rated, top-rated institution encompassing both aspects, we anticipate a 34% increase in visitor traffic by national visitors and a 21% increase in international visitors to Kingman in year one of opening. The average visitor party spend is estimated at $133 per day. Next slide. As a community pillar, from a playful learning environment to workforce development and economic advancement, the EVM will positively influence quality of life in Kingman. But it's beyond our doors where we'll make our biggest contributions to Kingman. EVM will be a community pillar supporting and promoting local businesses, organizations, artists, leaders, and tradesmen through sponsorship, class sales, initiatives, and so much more. Whether by public work initiatives throughout the city, strategic partnerships with local vendors and entities, or programs and events intentionally created to celebrate and support Kingman's residents, the museum will be a community-wide collaborative endeavor to see the town we love flourish. Next slide. So since our last conversation, next slide again. We have been busy. So this, this chart shows what we have been working on. We've applied for, which is the appropriations request, you see that we printed out, 20-plus million dollars for government grants and appropriation, which is from their general fund, it's not from their oversized budget. It's a different, a different source of monies that they set aside for things of this endeavor. Is the, I feel like there's a lot of feedback. Is it still okay?
Will you just put your mic back just a tad?
Sure.
Does your TV?
Normally, I'm really good with microphones. We have also, in addition to the public sector grants, we've applied for private and corporate grants in the amount of 61,000, and that's just been since the beginning of this year. Donations we've received since the beginning of '23, around 400,000 in private donations and 500 in memberships. Those numbers were before this past month, where we've had additional members sign up and commit. Additional grants we are intending to apply for, we're just waiting for the portals to open, is about $6.7 million in funds, and that's just what we've got so far. There are many, many more in the pipeline. We'll be hosting at least seven events this year, and one of which will be hopefully partnering with the current location of the museum and celebrating our 10-year anniversary of having the location here at the powerhouse, and we are planning for our first annual gala that will be around that same date. Now I feel like it's totally gone. Is it not working? Testing, one, two.
I think there might be any charging issue because they ramped hours.
Okay.
There we go. We're backing them up right here.
We're backing them up, okay. All in good spirits, I'm sure. Okay. Wouldn't, oh, I'm not going to touch it. We'll just wait patiently.
We're waiting on next slide.
So again, as Hannah had mentioned, these numbers are forecasts, and so this here, please refer to the chart, it is our financial forecast, planning, and projecting what's coming. I'll give everybody a moment to look at that, to let me know if you have any questions. Sure.
Membership. What's it cost to be a member? Or is it just donations or?
There are membership tiers, tiers, you know, that start from lower to way up there. They're still being determined. Hannah, do you want to take over that, that answer?
Yes, so we just came up with two separate types of tiers.
I can't hear her.
And the board is looking at it and waiting on a final approval before we kind of launch it officially and start.
Hannah, can you hold on just one second? I'm going to have to have, we're trying, they're adjusting the mics in here, we're having some technical difficulties.
No worries at all. It could be me, technology.
I think that the membership tiers haven't been completely outlined, because without having a definite, we want to be able to offer them things that involve coming to our facilities and using our services, and without having that completely defined, it would be hard to offer those tiers at this time. So right now, we offer a basic membership, which is like $25 a year, but it will definitely grow from there as we have amenities and services and exhibits and demonstrations to Next slide. Oh, look, there I am. So, oop.
Your, that's six inches. Right. They answered the mic.
All right. Okay. No problem. So this here is just a list of our support so far that we thought would be important to recognize and share with you. We have John Gillette, Gillette, who is our state representative. Katie Hobbs and her team are in support. Jim Hinckley, he's a public figure, and he thinks it's a great idea. And then Ms. Becky Fawcett here, as the, in addition to being our vice president, she is the Chamber of Commerce CEO. There are many organizations and associations around the nation that also support our museum as we are one-of-a-kind and completely unique in our collection, and those are listed. In addition, Peterson Automotive Museum, it is located in LA. It is a very large facility. It is a museum that not only supports and highlights electric transportation, but they have a collection of any car and every car you could ever think of, from, you know, the Pope's car to Thelma and Louise's car, you know, they, it's across the board, and they have partnered with us, they have given us collection, cars for our collection, they have asked us what cars to keep an eye out for us. So they are also partnering with us, and they are an organization and a museum that we can reach out to and kind of, not mimic, but mirror, or, you know, take a lead from, because they're doing it and they're doing it well. We've also had some internal changes. Prior to myself coming onboard the beginning of last year and Kent Backy taking over the role as president and Becky as vice president, there was a completely different board, and I, and I think, you know, a few of us have had this conversation, but when the foundation started its relationship with the city about a decade ago, there was a completely different board. started its relationship with the city about a decade ago, there was a completely different board of directors for the foundation. Unfortunately, throughout the years, things have happened. We've had, you know, some members and board officers pass away, or move, or illnesses set in that caused the foundation to have to kind of restructure the foundation. However, holding on to the core of the founding, the ideas of what this organization intended to look like, the dream of not only Robert Wild, but also Larry Fisher, and these gentlemen that just put years and years of their life into this collection. We have over 100 vehicles, you know, some of them still need to be restored, and there's a lot of history to share and innovation to just recount and keep moving. So, just to know that the reason, I think, that ever since the council had made their decision to move forward with this project, however, I can't even recall what year it was when they voted to buy that building and to do the things, there's been a lot of changes on our end too since happening. And we know that the foundation previously wasn't very present with the operating of the Route 66 EV museum and managing the collection, but for good reason, and also for good reason, it's taken a new position. So, next slide, please.
Vice Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that Mayor Watkins has joined us on Zoom.
Welcome, Mayor Watkins.
So, as we get more and more involved in the grant writing and searching for funds, we are, we're finding ourselves having dilemmas. Without having, there's tons of funding out there, more than I ever thought was even an option. There's, it's amazing to me, the opportunities that we could potentially have at our fingertips with an institution like this and an organization like this. However, we are finding ourselves slightly limited not having established or securing a definite location. So, a lot of these funding opportunities, they don't want to provide us with a million dollars to buy a building or to build a building. They want us to have that set in place prior to. Next slide. And, next slide again, please, thank you. So, here's where I thought, we thought that we could go back to the original vote of council and the purchase of the building, and how we could brainstorm the organization, the foundation securing the building, and what opportunities or what parameters the city has to work with to maybe help us. So, that's, I think this is where the work session could set in, and what something like that could look like.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, council, do you have any questions? Any comments? When was that building purchased? Do you know, Tina?
I know it was in August, I don't know if it was in 2020 or 2021.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, what's the will of the council? Mayor, did you have any comments or questions?
I'm giving some thought right now. Thanks for asking, though. I had unmute, I had to figure out, find the unmute button real quick when you ask. So, I know that, you bring up some good points, and of course, another issue that we're facing as a city too, and you all know this, is that we're limited on office space ourselves for the city. So, what do we do? I know we're all interested in moving very far, you know, moving forward with this electric car museum. So, these are all some really good questions we all need to discuss.
May I say something? As a, just a citizen of the community, if the idea of using that facility as an office space after everything that's been working towards and the goal what would seem the downtown community is kind of aiming at, I would question as a resident if that would be, if an office setting would be the most ideal attraction to locate in a building in its current, in that location. I see that space as more of a, whether it's the museum or not, but an event source or an attraction of some sort, not another city building. But that's just me as a, as a community, a resident and a business owner here.
Valid point.
On the brainstorming aspect of this, with the financing, grants, and not wanting to be used to buy a building or build a building, what are you asking us to do with that building?
I think ideally, the foundation would like to purchase that building at some point. I think in the interim, it would be, it would be something, and I don't, again, I don't know the legalities of the municipal and what you can do, but I know that there's some, I've heard in other situations where there has been a subsidized lease for X amount of time, and then ideally, I think we would like to lease, purchase it with a subsidized lease for X amount of years, and then be offered the opportunity to purchase. I don't, again, from your standpoint, I don't know what the city is, I don't know what you guys can work with or not.
How soon would you, or will you know about the funding that you need to get going?
Hannah?
So, with the funding, it's all gonna come in at different times. The big, big funding, the 20 million one, because we're applying for a number of other ones right now, but the 20 million in particular is a big question mark because it's based on the U.S. government, the Subhouse Committee for the Community, sorry, it's late here, my brain's dead, for the Community Project Facilities Fund. And we don't know about it until the government decides on the national budget for the year. So, once they finish that, anywhere from May to September, we'll get a heads up. That's not even as big of a concern for us as much as just knowing that we have the building, because what we're seemingly running into is, we'll fill out all of these grants, or we'll even talk to people who are interested in throwing money at the project, and then when you get to the regulations of the grant, or the program, or the fund, they're like, well, we don't, we don't fund buildings, we don't fund new buildings, or we don't fund you to purchase a, an older building of any kind. We will put money into renovating the building, we'll put money into your program in the building, but not that part. And 90%, if not more, of these funds, while we're in this phase at least, are specifically for location, location-specific, helping Kingman, rural areas, local areas, regional, Arizona, all of the above. So, when they ask us, okay, where are you located? And we go, well, we're in Kingman, they're like, where? So, we give them an address, and they're like, facility. And then we go, okay, here's the deal, we are working on getting this, hence the grants that they're not necessarily supporting. So, it's kind of a workaround.
Okay, with the conceptual aspect of everything, say you get your funding, we work out a lease option for you, et cetera, et cetera, what timeframe are you looking at about having it up and functional?
So, that would depend on the construction itself. Now, what we've been told in the past, and I can't 100% put my foot behind it until we speak to them again based on the new plans, but from my understanding, and Tasha and Kent, please correct me if I'm wrong, they were looking at a year, year and a half now. That being said, I don't know if that necessarily means that we wouldn't have a wing open before that.
We would like to ideally participate in the centennial for the Route 66 in 2026.
That's the big goal.
Counselor Staley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I came into this meeting thinking that we're just getting an update on where you're at and fundraising and that kind of thing, so I did not come today prepared to talk about leases or, or any of these types of things, what we're gonna do with the building. I could see this being a topic of discussion for the council retreat, and where we could sit down and talk about what everyone sees happening in the future, and what those lease options are and that kind of thing, Tina. But, yeah, I'm guessing that none of us are prepared today with information on how we wanna move forward.
That wasn't, exactly, but we had to propose to you where we were, that was part of the update, and this is what dilemmas we're running into. I didn't expect you to have an answer. Right, I understand that dynamic, but we did have to put it out there, you know, so this is what we've been working on, this is where we're roadblocking, and, you know, this is what we're hoping for. So, just, it will be something, obviously, you guys would have to meet with and come back with something, but we needed to let you know what we were working with.
Okay, good.
And then, back to this page where you've received $400,000 in private donations, is that, I think you said this and I missed it, but is that money for the building, for the purchase of the building?
That currently is, we're using fundraising efforts, it's sitting in a safe space, and there are, it costs money to raise money, and so those haven't been specified for building purchase because we, just, they just not have been determined, but they are.
So, that's more your, for your operations?
Correct.
Okay.
And fundraising.
So, do you have money set aside specifically for the purchase of the building, or that's what you're working on?
That's what we're working towards.
Okay.
Let me weigh in here. From past meetings with the city, I'm acutely aware that the, justifiably, the city doesn't want to sell or provide a property without the assurance that the project is going to happen in a reasonable period of time. We're not limited in our fundraising activities merely to grants that may not want to participate in a building purchase. But what we need from the city is, if you're willing to either lease or sell the building, what would be your conditions on when, when you have evidence of sufficient funding so that the property, so that the museum does open? And I don't know if everyone knows that the Odd Fellows Building was purchased not by the foundation, but for the benefit of the foundation, and that will be reverting to, the transfer of title will be to the, to the foundation in the next few months. Also, we are an outside member for the benefit of the foundation is possibly purchasing another building on the other side of the tracks where we can store all of, all of the vehicles that we own in one place, all the electric vehicles, which is well over 100 vehicles, and also give us space to continue to receive donations of vehicles. So, we've spent a lot of time restructuring the board and getting our plans in place so that we could really launch a more comprehensive fundraising activity. And so, the grants, since they take much longer, is what we focused on first, and the next phase is to go to people or individuals or, or non-public entities that have deep pockets that will help support the museum.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Eric has a question.
Counselor Eric?
I had a quick question, just as we're talking, as we're getting close to the conversation of leasing it, did you guys have a number in mind?
No, because there's been a lot of conversation in the past with, you know, the previous city manager and other meetings that, that it was, it was claimed that there was certain statutes or certain limitations or certain, the conversation didn't get very far. And so, I think that it would be something from, you know, we're private, you're public, what that looks like from a standpoint of what you all can, because you, you're working with tax dollars and, and the people's funds. So, you, I think, would have to tell us what it is you can offer, because I can't even pretend to know that parameter. If, if that was a suitable response.
Thank you.
So, I had anticipated that we would at least get some kind of direction on what we can offer as far as not getting down to figures and things like that, but, you know, as far as can, can we lease that building? Can we do a lease-to-purchase? Is that something that the city can do? Understanding that your roadblock is a location, and you're applying for grant funding, understanding your timeline is important, and I know we definitely don't want to hold up any, I mean, we're going to have our retreat when? We don't know. So, putting this off to a retreat discussion, at least we have the opportunity to get the council together, get the information disseminated, and have all the information at the same time as to what our thoughts are, because we don't want to keep kicking this can down the road for the sake of the, of the foundation who is diligently working towards securing a location and moving along with our project. So, to your point, Counselor Staley, I, I think that when we were, we had met with the EV group, we did kind of understand that we needed to go back and kind of find out what, what we needed to do as far as, and what we could do. So, I'd like to hear from Mr. Cooper and, and give us just like a 30,000-foot overview of what's possible, because we can't, the expectation for them to come to us with something that they have no idea what we can or cannot do, to me, is unrealistic.
Sure, the 30,000, 40,000-foot level is, it's something I always talk to you folks about, it's the gift clause, Arizona constitutional gift clause, and what it is, is we just can't give something away, the public monies, to any private entity. There has to be some sort of direct correlation of value. So, yes, we can sell the building, you can lease the building, you need to establish that it's gonna be at fair market value, or essentially close to fair market value. And then with the talk of the subsidizing, that becomes much more difficult because it has to be something, it's a direct substantial benefit to the city. You know, increased tourism is not a direct substantial benefit to the city, according to the courts. Taxes are not a direct substantial income to the city, for the courts has to be something that's very specific, and that would be something we have to discuss. And, and not knowing exactly what they have in mind. So, I know it's one of those problems where you're trying to say, what are you guys doing? What are you guys doing? There has to be a little bit of blending of both, but knowing more about some of your plans, I think it makes it easier for the city to be able to say, okay, these are things that maybe we can look to address. But again, it has to be something that's gonna be a direct substantive thing that the city itself benefits.
So, an outright purchase of the building is possible?
Yeah.
A lease?
Leasing is possible.
Is possible?
Yep.
A lease-to-purchase option?
I don't see, I, I haven't run across anything like that before. I mean, I know what they are in practicality, but in the government settings, I haven't seen that, but I don't think it's prohibited, but I think it's definitely something we can look at. Again, you just have to make sure the terms are.
Right. So, I get, I hate to keep cutting you off, but I want to finish my, my thought, and my thought is, if, if they are needing to know what we can and cannot do, that's kind of what I was thinking, the purpose of this meeting was to send them back, have them do what it is they need to do, and, and present us with the discussion. So, not having a retreat even scheduled, your timeline is of the essence to you, so I, I don't know, what, what would you prefer the next steps be?
I guess it's, I would relate it to kind of what we do out at the airport. If there's an interest in the property, we generally, I'm not saying they have to apply and ask for something, but I think the intent's here, but we usually have the purchaser or the interested party pay for an appraisal, to appraise the value of the property, either for sale or for, for leasing, and then kind of go from there to see what's within their budget and what we're able to do, and then we can try and work something out again. Like, I'm trying to think of like some specific example. There was a city that negotiated a deal with a hotel, and I don't remember the exact specifics about cutting some kind of break, and what they ended up doing was, the hotel granted the city the use of a pool for swim lessons, so that's how they related as a direct benefit to the community. So that's how they related as a direct benefit to the community, whatever break they got associated with this pool. And I'm shortchanging the whole deal, but that's just trying to explain something that's a direct benefit. So in this situation, if there were, see, we don't have schools, so it's hard to relate saying we're going to send the schools in. But there could be something we could try and talk to, to see if there's a direct benefit. But again, that direct benefit is going to be, what's the value of that benefit? And then how you can reduce that from the value of the building or the lease options.
So when the city originally purchased the building for the purpose of the museum, they saw a direct benefit to utilizing the collection and the facility at that location. What did that dynamic look like in relation to the organization that owned the collection? How was that, I mean, because we're kind of still?
I think at that point in time, it was the city was running the whole show.
Okay.
I believe that was the discussion. And Tina may correct me if not. And that was, I think, at some point when I was involved in some discussions, it was you, the, the Historic Vehicle Museum was donating, not donating, but allowing the use of the vehicles. We were going to be running the museum and having some, some city offices in there. And I think that's where we got to that relationship.
Was there a conversation about that relationship that I don't know about? Because I never?
This would have been years.
Okay.
I, I, maybe Tina can recall if there's any.
I don't, I was never a part of those conversations, but I do recall being shared, those conversations with, from Mr. Fogg. And he'd shared that, and the purpose of us purchasing that building was that we were going to manage the operations of that. Josh and his team, we're going to take that on. You were going to store your vehicles there and on display. But we were going to be overseeing those operations.
And taking in any revenue or potential income from that. Okay, so that would be the direct benefit. I, even in the previous MOU, I just never read anything like that. So I was just curious if that was just conversations or how that came to play?
Yeah, that previous MOU was mostly just a kind of acknowledgement that, you know, things are floating around. Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Eric?
Yes. I have a quick question for the purchase or the lease agreement. Does it require secured funds? Like, do we need to wait for this 20 million grant before we can do anything?
If I understand your question correctly, if they, I don't think we, whatever negotiation we come up with.
Do they need proof of funds before we?
If that's a choice that we want to make, that would end up being some kind of a negotiation. It's for, the city itself would be, we, we have an interest for a specific use, sort of like what we do out at the airport, saying, okay, we're going to sell this to whoever, maybe you, maybe not you, but whoever to, for, trying, I don't want to sound callous, but we can't, when we're doing this, we need to make sure we're doing the best interests of the city, all my legal blah, blah, blah. But what we're going to say is we're looking for a museum that would support the, the historic electric atmosphere that we're looking for. And you would build that out with an expectation of whatever. That would be part of the sales terms. And that may include number of jobs, number of vehicles, or some future funding. But that would be a discussion that we would have when we get to that point. I mean, it's not, that's something to negotiate. That's not just something.
Conditions attached to the, to the contract.
So if that, if that 20 million dollar grant doesn't happen, this could still happen?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Would, I'm, I'm sorry, were you finished? I didn't mean to cut you off.
I am finished.
So maybe, I just kind of popped into my head, it was talked about before, when that building was first acquired by the city to maybe housing the economic department or something, you know, some of the city's needs or kind of, you know, working with that. Would that be some kind of relationship that could be established that would, that would be a direct benefit to the city?
Yeah, and that would be something we could negotiate. So if you're talking about you operate out of half of the building, the city operates out of the other half, whatever size we're talking about for our offices, then there would be a, a direct correlation to the value that we have according to the value of what we're leasing and or selling it, so.
And I would think too, like if there's event space in there.
Right.
Would be a huge benefit to downtown.
So it sounds like there's no template for something like this and it could be negotiated or?
Right. Yeah, we can definitely negotiate something.
Right.
Again, I think we have to come to a point where there's a value.
Correct, yes.
An established value, then we kind of go from there. What's the city's position? What are the city's needs? What are your needs? And, and where are we going to go?
And how do we go about that?
Well, I think first, as I, we'd need a, an appraisal.
Okay.
So would council be agreeable to direct them to get an appraisal and present us with something that we would be able to review? What's the, what's the will of the council? Do we want to hold on to this asset? Yeah.
I think this project would be a great benefit to downtown, especially with the revitalized streetscape. And as people visit this museum, they would spend money in the downtown area and it'd be a huge benefit. And I'm okay.
I would just make one comment. It would be prudent to make sure that this is the direction your council, the council's wishing to go prior to saying, why don't you go get an appraisal and spend some monies? Because you could be doing that and you may not have the whole council on board with that.
Counselor Staley, what's your, what's your pleasure?
Well, that's why I was saying that we should address this when we do our strategic planning meetings, so the council can sit down and talk about. Because i- if you think about it, when we purchased this building and we're going to move forward with this under the city, that was a totally different council. You have council members that haven't ever really weighed in on the museum or their support. I mean, I don't, I'm not sitting here, I don't know that everybody supports the museum. And that's, that's, that was my intent in saying that if we sit down in a planning meeting, we can, we can talk about this and see where everybody is at.
Right. And, and to expand upon that, I would agree with you. I don't think that the council was in favor of the city running a museum. I think the council is in favor of a museum that is not run by the city, that could be run by a group, that could bring and spur on more economic development. I think it was pretty clear that we weren't in support of that when we swept those funds for the improvements during the budget.
Right.
So I, I was the one that had wanted this workshop so that we could keep these folks moving. So, you know, I, I don't know that a retreat three months down the road is going to... Carl?
Well, you can't, you could partially have some in executive session, but executive session, if you're trying to set policy or formulate some ideas, you generally do that in public. So with an executive session, you're looking for some legal advice, specific legal advice. Or if you're at the point where you're negotiating a contract or something along that line, then that's when we definitely go into.
Can we get that on the agenda so we can publicly discuss this?
Well, I think at this point in time, we don't have really an action item to put on the agenda. So, you know, I, I, I wanted to take the will of the council on seeing if we should continue these discussions with the EV group. It sounds like Counselor Eric is, is supportive. I, I know I'm supportive. I don't think we need to be running a museum other than the powerhouse than what we're currently doing. You know, I, I love the idea of sharing it with the ED team. I don't love the idea of turning it into an ED building that just is office space. I tend to agree with Ms. O'Neil that, you know, I, I feel like what we're building downtown relates to tourism and relates to people coming and spending tax dollars and, but I love the idea of sharing it. So, you know, that's something.
But on, on the other hand too, I've heard discussion of using that building for the city. And, and if, if there is discussion to be had on that, we need to have that before we move forward with an electric car museum.
Fair enough. Ms. Mullin?
I came in totally against the city doing this. So, and we all agreed to move those into contingency funds. But to be honest with you, it would be a great bookend for downtown. I, I see the vision. On the grants, what type of timeframe are you on, on whether or not you know you're going to be getting those?
Well, with the, the appropriations, that's not necessarily considered a grant. It's managed, I think, as a grant would be, but it is written into a.
It's a federal appropriations.
It's a federal appropriations. It's written into a bill that is then, so, once the bill's written, it will be like presented to the House. And then if they all agree with it and move forward, then it will go into, I think we're looking at the 2025, 26 budget fiscal year of how they do things. With the other grants, as Hannah had mentioned just a few minutes ago, they will kind of all come in diff, you know, that's grants. You know, we've applied and then we wait and we apply and we wait, we wait to apply, you know. So it's hard to say it's probably not all going to come in one lump sum. But we do have a little bit of time. But, but as Mr. Baki stated, we aren't solely reliant on, on grant money. Once we do have something to, for lack of a better word, to sell, you know, or to present to people in the, the EV community, you know, that want to support, invest in, and support organizations such as ours. A lot of our funding will be coming from outside the public sector. So it, I can't, I don't have a.
And just to elaborate a little bit, I mean, once, like Patashal said, it's not completely dependent on one grant or two grants. I don't know if you guys know anybody on our team close enough, but I think we're probably the most determined humans alive with the most know-how. Nothing's going to stop us. We're getting, something's coming through. But regardless of that, it's more than just grants. Once we can say we have a building, for example, we already have Blue Cross Blue Shield willing to sign up on a corporate annual membership. You know, that's every single month paying multiple thousands of dollars towards things like this. And they're just one of many companies, but nobody wants to move forward until we have something secured. Once we can say, yes, we have it, it's a lot easier to go, okay, now we can sell you this vision because it doesn't seem as much as like pie in the sky. It's something more grounded.
Tangible.
I hope that makes sense.
Yes. So to you, three months is not unreasonable for possibly us to get a strategic plan set. And for, for you EV folks, is that, is that a good timeline so we can discuss? It sounds like council is needing some more discussion on what to even do with that building.
So if I can, if I can just jump in, we got our new city manager on board, April 22nd. We're all very excited about that. And we know that when he does come on board, we're wanting to have some sort of strategic planning meeting. We were originally thinking of holding that in the fall. But there are a lot of items that we've come up with over the last few months that we want to include in that meeting that's not just what we have been doing in the past. So I'm wondering if it would make sense for us to maybe have a planning meeting before we go into the strategic planning retreat to where we could possibly bring these items to the table. And instead of waiting three, four months, maybe do a meeting in May to kind of be a precursor to that strategic planning setting meeting. And then have the full-blown strategic planning meeting a few months later. And then we could possibly attack some of these items. I don't know what the will of the council is on, on that idea.
Well, I thought, other than the new city manager having a retreat prior to the budget, otherwise we're going to go into another budget question without any, so that's why I thought that was going to be happening soon. And I did not have a date there.
I, I did not either. So Mr. Miller had shared with us that we were not going to hold a strategic planning meeting until the new city manager had come on board. So that's the direction we were going with that. I apologize if that wasn't communicated clearly.
No, I, I, the fall is news to me as well. I, I'd rather move it up if, once we get him in place, if he's comfortable with that. I mean, I was thinking, I was thinking at the latest July.
Okay.
Because that's, I mean, we're, it is still post-budget, so, so it would have to be May.
It, it would actually, remember this year, we pushed the budget up a few weeks. We're having work sessions before Mr. Walsh is even on board. And we will be bringing to the council the first, second meeting in May, actually, the tentative budget adoption. So unless we want to push everything out, and, and we can certainly do that, we were planning on moving forward with the budget as, as, as planned. So to that, I guess, to your point, the budget would potentially be almost, be almost adopted in May.
So that timeline won't work. Mayor Watkins, do you have any comments?
Tina has a lot of wisdom in what she says. Thanks, Vice Mayor. But especially, I would really like to have some thought, you know, some input from our new city manager also. You know, we're, as we've all talked, we're throwing him in to the frying pan right away to begin with. And so we need to try to include him, give him some guidance also. So does that mean pushing the budget back a week or two? I don't know. Tina, can we even afford to do that?
We can certainly use the same timeline that we've used in the past. I, but there is a very short timeline if we want to try to adopt before July 1st. So if we were to bring him on board and we had a council retreat in late April, we could, we could make that work if there were any. I can't imagine there's going to be anything major that's going to change out of that retreat, maybe some different direction. But I think overall, we would be able to accommodate that. So I think that if we were to hold something in late April, got some direction from the council, made some minor tweaks to what we're working with currently going into the budget season, pushed out the adoption to June, the two meetings in June, I think we could make that work.
I got a question for you, Carl.
And good, I was just going to make a statement. This would be a great conversation for an actual agenda item.
Yeah. Can, can, before Manager Walsh actually is officially starting, is he able to attend meetings?
Yeah, he can come to the meetings.
So we, can we set something up before his actual hire date?
I mean, he's already got a job he's got to deal with and he's probably has some commitments. But, but yeah, he can, he can be at the meetings. He can attend executive session, those sort of things. But yeah, there's.
I'd like to have us arrange something like that around his schedule, of course.
Yeah, and again, he's being uncompensated, but I think he might be willing to, to jump in on as much as he can, so.
That's what happens when you get hired just before budget. So what's the will of the council? Do you have something formal that you'd like to, like, support? Do you want to have?
I don't, we're not making.
No, we're not making any decisions today, no. But do you, do you want to, do you want to enter, entertain discussion on next steps for?
May I say one last thing? Just to keep in mind, from our position as an organization, the prolonging of your decision obviously is going to prolong our efforts. So just keeping that in mind, we, we are kind of at a standstill until we have some feedback from you, so.
That's why we're trying to speak.
Right, no, I appreciate that. And so, because you asked prior to having this little round of conversation and so what our position was, so that.
But one of the reasons why I was asking about your funding is, is because I wanted to see, I mean, do you have the money to buy the building? Do you have the money for a one-year lease? Because, because that's important.
That depends on what, what that looks like.
The terms are?
The terms and the conditions and, and the amount, you know, it, it's, it's, there's a lot of variables. I cannot outright answer that question.
Okay, okay, thank you. I always ask them money questions. That's.
Right, no, I mean, we, we have fun, we have, it just depends on what is proposed and what the amount of the money is. And, and, you know, I can't answer without knowing those details.
All right.
So we need to know what fair market. Appraisal is kind of a. The value of that building as a SAP.
Sorry, Jangus, wasn't quite finished. So getting an appraisal is a bit of a gamble for you because you may not have the funds to purchase the building, let's say. You'd be out the money of the appraisal and then you may not have the funding to be able to move forward. Because in a lot of cases, like when we're talking about the airport and when somebody Because in a lot of cases, like when we're talking about the airport, and when somebody wants to buy a property, they already know they want that property, they get the appraisal, they know they're going to purchase it, they have an idea, a range of what it's going to cost, based on square footage, and then they're going to buy that, so.
From previous conversations with the city, and knowing the amount that the building was purchased for, and taking appreciation into consideration, I think that the building in itself currently at market could be roughly around a million dollars, you know, between 900 and a million. I think the city purchased it for 875. And so in our, we kind of have a rough idea of what a purchase of that facility would look like, an appraisal would lock that in. That is why we've kind of proposed the idea of leasing it, and then purchasing it, because even if we did have a million dollars sitting there, ready to be spent, ideally, with what we're working with in our programming and our restoration, if we could utilize, just like with you guys, in your, in your budget, if you could allot those, you know, your funds to be utilized in a different avenue, you know, we could use our funds to, to build our program, to restore more, restore more vehicles, to create exhibits, to raise additional funds. So it's hard for me to say, yes, we have the money to outright buy a building, because then what, do we sit on a building and not be able to do anything with it? So that's where, again, the negotiation and the partnership could come into play of, and I can't directly answer the question.
Okay.
Okay.
So could I just, I guess the suggestion would be, is potentially have you folks work with, I always like to throw Bennett in the mix, just work with Bennett. I know that, you know, an appraisal, Bennett was saying about 3,500 to 5,000 dollars, we look at an appraisal that gives a lease value, as well as a purchase value, I think that's something that would definitely get the group moving in the right direction. So we could, then we would have the ability to start throwing out some specifics.
Ms. Mullin?
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Mullin?
I was going to also suggest that we could potentially agendize changing the budget dates at the upcoming meeting, if you are interested in that, setting a strategic planning meeting, contacting Mr. Walsh in the meantime, and seeing what his availability is, so that we can accommodate meeting, and having the ability to share what the outcome of that planning meeting is, also.
And Ms. Mullin is going off script right now.
Pardon me?
So this Mullin was going off script.
Better her than me. Did you have something, Becky?
Went the wrong way. I'm just going to throw another idea out there, just for thoughts of a benefit to the city, is the Parks and Rec, like, classes and things like that, that could also be held in that facility. And I know that, that's something, just maybe an added benefit, direct benefit for the city.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I also request that for our, if we have a future strategy meeting, that we also have a plan of what the city would do with it, if we didn't sell it or lease it out?
Yes.
How many offices, or what we would put in it, just so we can compare?
I think that, yes, Mr. Eric, that would be the purpose of that plan, just to kind of investigate all uses likely. All right, anybody else have any comments?
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
And actually, this might be for Tina or for Tasha, I know, Tasha, you were talking about, you know, what we bought that for. Do you remember what the square footage was of that building? Any of you?
It's just shy of 20,000 square feet.
Okay, okay. Because, you know, a lot, obviously, and we'll say it, a lot of things are based on so much per square foot. So let's say we, you know, let's just throw, just throwing numbers around, let's say it's 20,000 square feet. I know out at the airport, warehouse space is going for what, 60 cents a square foot, I think? Something like that, Bennett?
Between 50 and 60 cents a square foot.
Yeah, so, you know, so right there, right off the bat, just to give you a rough idea, that's 12,000 a month, you know, so there's, these are numbers, we can start reducing down to numbers. We can actually do a pretty good idea, get pretty close to it, without having to pay for, until it's real serious, and, you know, as far as a, getting a appraisal and all that kind of stuff. So these are things we can, we can consider also. Because no one wants that cost of, if the whole thing were to fall apart, obviously, we don't want the, the association to have paid for a, an appraisal, and then it doesn't come to fruition. That'd be a waste of money.
And I would definitely encourage working with Bennett on that, he knows the appraisers that we use, and so they're qualified, and they definitely, I think we would, we would want to go that direction, and using some of the appraisers that we've used in the past, too, so.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any other questions, comments? All right, we're adjourned.